Hello again, everyone. I am Vanessa Rouse, Executive Director of the Village Square. Welcome to the second portion of our 11th Annual Tallahassee Town Hall. Thank you so much for joining us. I'd like to also thank our partners that made this possible, the City of Tallahassee, Leon County Government, Leadership Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and of course, WFSU. We are starting the second half of our program now, which will be with our county commissioners. Thank you all for being here. If you missed the first half or any portion of this evening, the entire program will be aired on WFSU TV tomorrow at 8:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time, and it will be archived on wfsu.org. You can also listen on WFSU Radio 88.9. The broadcast will be split into two parts for that, and it will be on the radio, the city commission portion on this Friday, April 7th at 7:00, and the second half with the county commissioners will be on next Friday, April 14th at 7:00 Eastern. Now, it is again my honor to turn it over to Kim Kelling of WFSU to introduce you to the panel and moderator for this portion of the evening.
Vanessa. I'm Kim Kelling, Director of Content and Community Partnerships here at WFSU Public Media. A quick reminder, if you have a question for the commissioners and you are here in the studio audience, you can write your question out on the slips of paper that were on your chair, raise your hand, and we will bring you a slip of paper, and we will raise your hand when you've written your question, and we'll come by and pick it up. We will try to get to as many questions as possible, but time is limited. Online viewers can also submit questions through Zoom, Q&amp;A, or in the Facebook comment, or by using the Twitter hashtag #TallyTownHall. We'll do our best to get your questions asked, time permitting. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce the distinguished panel for the second portion of tonight's program. Starting immediately to my left is Commissioner David O'Keefe. Next up is Commissioner Nick Maddox, followed by Commissioner Rick Minor, and last but not least, County Commissioner David O'Keefe.
Brian Welch.
I can't believe I did that. Ah, Brian Welch. See, they mixed, they mixed it up, and it threw me off. Sorry about that.
They both have the same hairstyle.
Well, that's, I think that's why we separated them.
And I'm getting there, by the way.
Oh, anyway, I will do better. Um, and, well, humor's always good. I also want to let you know, I just came back from Africa. I traveled 30 hours to get home last night, so I'm not quite all there. So, there, I've got an excuse. But I'd like to turn it over now to Tom Flanagan. If you don't know Tom, I don't know how you would not know Tom. He is our reporter-at-large here at WFSU, my colleague, my friend. I'm going to turn it over to you, and get out of the way, Tom.
And welcome back from Africa, Kim. We were terrified she was going to bring back a baby cheater or something, but that did not occur. Welcome to our portion of our town, where we're going to talk to some members of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, and we're going to delve into some super-heavy-duty kinds of contentious, confounding, heavy debate issues tonight, and we're going to start it off with Commissioner Maddox, Chair of the County Commission. How do you explain your job to a five-year-old?
Five-year-old? Um, I actually have a four-year-old at the house, so he does not listen at all. So, you know, I think about what we do, and the best way, when I go to schools and I have young children, I try to explain to them. I say, "We make the rules," and we also specify where people can actually build and what they build. And then they look at me when I say "specify," and say, "What does that mean?" That's the simplest way I can put it. But to an older crowd, I would say, anything local, when it comes to ordinances, when it comes to land use, we make decisions on that. The most important thing we do is land use and budget. Those are two most important things that we do. We dictate the budget every year, and we also are able to, through the comp plan, make decisions about land use and things like that. So that's why I would, that's why I would explain it.
Well, you've got a very intelligent four-year-old, because that's a pretty good answer. Actually, we'll be getting into some more substantive things than that, but I just kind of wanted to toss that out there. I was going to ask Commissioner Welch how he avoids the students that child's, you know, forging his name on hall passes, but I, you know, we'll let that one sit for a little bit. Trust and civility, I think this is something that has been of great import and certainly impact on our political scene now for certainly the past several years, and I know it's something that really concerns the members of the county commission, also the city commission whom we just talked to. So I want to get your thoughts on this, and folks, since there's four of you in contrast to three of the city commissioners, brevity is the spice of life. If we can, you know, keep things kind of as condensed as we can, we can get to more things tonight. But let's start off with this easy one here, and see if we can explore some common ground. What do you all agree on as members of this board, and how are you similar to your colleagues on the county commission? Commissioner O'Keefe, let's start with you.
Thank you, Tom. And first, I'd like to say happy Passover to our neighbors who celebrate. The first part of the question, I think, on this commission, we all agree that we are responsible to our county citizens and for the future of our county citizens, and that even if we don't agree on a policy or a vote, we all come with good intentions, and that we think what we're supporting is right for the community. And then how are we alike, or how are we different?
Yeah, let's start with the similarities.
Similarities with the city commission.
Or just with your colleagues here on the county.
That was the similarity with everyone on the county commission.
Philosophically, politically, however you want to pose it.
Sure. On the county commission, we get along very well. We don't all vote the same way on every issue or policy, but we know we are all here, we all ran for office, and we all worked hard to get here because we want to do what's best for the future of the community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
I think we all agree on the intent of trying to respect one another in our views. I think everybody's elected, we have different minds, we have different thought processes, but one thing is that I try to lead as chairman, is to make sure everybody's voice is heard, and then everybody's voice is respected. And even if we don't agree, that once we make a decision, we make that decision as a board, and that we try, and I have not seen it from this board, I don't think I will see it from this board, even if we don't agree, we don't beat each other up, whether it be in the, in the media or in social media. We may state our own, our own views on things, but we don't make personal attacks towards each other. And I think that's what, that's what makes this commission work well together, is that we keep it on the issue, and we don't make it personal about one another.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thanks, Tom, and happy Passover as well to folks that observed the holiday. I can say that everyone on the county commission, I believe, is working in good faith to make this community better. I believe that, all seven of us. But the issue is that we, it's not an issue, we all have very different perspectives, we have different backgrounds. I'd say we're probably more diverse than the city commission. We have, we represent different districts, five of us do, five of the seven represent districts in its own, in their own, in their own right. And so we, we have different perspectives on, on what the best thing for the community is. But I do think that we have a good productive relationship among the seven. If you look at our votes, there are not, on the big issues, rarely are they 7-0. Rarely are they 7-0. And I think that's a good thing, you know, good conflict, constructive conflict is really what you want at your local government level, right? You don't want a rubber stamp where everyone votes the same way every single time. You want a good discussion of the debate, very much like what Village Square gives you. And so that's what I think makes us different, but I think that's a plus, that's a benefit to what we have on the county commission.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Rouse.
Thanks, Tom, and also wanted to extend the happy Passover and happy Easter week to everybody, and, and thank the Village Square and WFSU and Leadership Tallahassee for having us. I think this is a great event that has 11 years now, you said, so awesome. Uh, just, you know, fourth in line, I'm going to echo what everybody said, but essentially, I think back to the question of what, how you'd explain what we do to a five-year-old, and I think that sort of lends itself to this answer, which is, we are all invested in just helping people. And I think that if we, if you come to the table with that mentality, it allows you to extend the benefit of the doubt to colleagues that you may disagree with on singular issues, because at the end of the day, I think we're all motivated to do what is right and what we think is truly in the best interests of the people that we serve. So when people ask me, when 15-year-olds or five-year-olds ask me what I do, I say, the easiest way to explain is that I try to help, I just want to help, whether that means with your garbage, or with a streetlight, or sit down and listen to you over a concern about a development or whatever, and then I would like to think that I can articulate those concerns back to my colleagues. But at the end of the day, my colleagues, they serve different constituencies, like Commissioner Minor said, and we all have different perspectives, but I think if we can objectively and fairly articulate those positions, then while bringing the benefit of the doubt to the rest of your colleagues, I think that it provides for a very collegial and respectful board, and I certainly embrace and enjoy being a part of such a collegial board under the leadership of Commissioner Minor at first, and then Commissioner Proctor last year, and now Chairman Maddox. We really do have robust and positive conversations, and, and I really appreciate that about this county commission.
Well, given that level of collegiality that you all just referenced, how do you take that, and in the spirit of the Village Square and the aspiration that I think just about everybody in local government has, to see more of that reflected in the community at large? How do you get those principles, those behavioral patterns, out into the wider audience, where there seems to be a lot of divisiveness and a lot of conflict and problems right now? Let's defer to the chair on this one. Commissioner Maddox, what do you think?
I think you lead by example. If you've come to our commission meetings, we've had a couple of commission meetings where we've had some hot issues on the docket. One night, I believe was here recently, we were there till 10:00?
10:00.
10, 11:00 at night.
Business anniversary, poor guy.
Yeah, yeah, business anniversary. And, and it was a hot issue, and it was one of those issues that could have gotten explosive and out of hand, but the commission handled itself in a way that the crowd knew that we were not going to tolerate any discourse that wasn't respectful of the folks that were in there, no matter what side you were on. And so if we act that way towards each other, it sets the example of what we expect from our constituents to come into the chambers, and they, and for the most part, they have respected that time and time again, no matter what the issue is. But when we start bickering with each other, when we start being disrespectful to one another, when we start the personal attacks towards one another, then it opens the door for a meeting and for an environment that does not, that's not conducive to collegiality. And so I think we, like I said, we have to lead by example in all that we do, and we have to lead by example in thinking, in the way we think, in thinking that everything that we do is for the community. It's not what I want, it's not how I think. If Commissioner, if I think something, Commissioner Minor comes up with an idea that's, that's better for the community than me, then I am going to acquiesce to that idea, and not stick to what I thought was best, but instead what was best for the community. I think our commission does a terrific job.
Okay, Commissioner O'Keefe, any other ideas that you have to build on that?
Absolutely. I agree with all of that, and in fact, at our last meeting, I liked, I saw, sometimes you may feel like, on some commissions, out in the world, people have their votes set up when they show up, but I saw other commissioners change their mind on something during discussion, and votes change because a new idea came up, and that's good legislation. Now, the community issue of divisiveness, a lot of that is not going to come from us, a lot of that is the content on the internet, the media, stuff like that. But what we can do is, it comes down to trust. If people believe and trust that we are listening to them, and that we are acting on what they tell us, and the decisions and the outcomes we lay, we lay out reflect their input, then they don't think they have to yell, then they don't have to make a scene just to be heard. But when we listen and we reflect back in our decisions, what our community is telling us, they learn that they can just tell us. They don't have to make a scene to get in the news, to create a controversy. And again, it comes back to leading by example, we treat others that way, and we treat our citizens that way, and we legislate that way. That's, that's our doing of heart.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Welch?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I think you hear phrases like "benefit of the doubt" and "good faith arguments." I think we live in a rancorous political environment. You see it on CNN and Fox News, we see it every day, and I think there's consistently attempts, whether accidental or not, to bring that level of discourse down to the local area, whether it's through national media, or local media, or, or internet, social media. And I think that if we are going to be compelled by, again, an ethic that is focused on just doing good, we have to accept that getting involved in, in name-calling and nasty debate is not productive at the end of the day, especially at the local level, because we're not talking about big national issues at the local level that people, we're talking about real day-to-day issues that people care about. And so for me, I look at that through the lens of, how can I be productive? How can I put runs on the scoreboard? How can I be an effective public servant? And in order for me to do that, I have to embrace the idea that all of that noise prevents you from actually making progress.
Okay, well, we'll end this one with you, Commissioner Minor.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what my colleagues have said, almost down to the T. Two things I want to add, though. One thing that, that I think all of us try to do on the county commissioners, we, we try to reach out to hear different points of view. I'll have lunch with someone that is on the other side of the political spectrum, someone who supported the other presidential candidate, someone who believes things that I think are crazy, but I'll meet with that person, and we'll talk about local government and about what we can do to this community, and we actually agree on a lot of those local things. We actually have the benefit, because we work at a, at a level of government where we can vote on something, and then go to the grocery store after a county commission meeting, and talk to people that are affected by the ordinance we just passed. And we all, whether, whether you're a liberal, progressive, moderate, conservative, you all want to grow the economy, you all want to protect our natural resources and improve, and keep our quality of life up high, you want to increase public safety, those are the core things we want, make better in this community. And so what we all try to do, I think, is, is start from that base, and then move from there.
Let's move on to the subject of public safety and crime, of major import to everyone, certainly. And just to revisit some figures here, in 2022, we had a total of 108 shootings resulting in 19 deaths, 91 injuries in our area, and in the first three months of this year, there have been 19 shootings that resulted in two deaths and 13 injuries. And then we recall the situation two weeks ago, the Tallahassee pharmacist, he was apprehended with scads of guns and ammunitions and explosives and all that kind of thing. So as far as public safety and crime, is our situation in our area really improving? And either yes or no if it is or not, what are we doing to make it better? Let's start with you, Commissioner Welch, and come on back down.
Obviously, public safety is a tip-of-the-spear kind of issue for local elected officials. I think that our police department and our sheriff are doing great jobs. I think that the sheriff specifically's Anatomy of Homicide report really put a magnifying glass on where the issues lie. I think we, as a community and as local elected officials, have taken very important steps to try and remedy those issues, whether it's through the Children's Services Council or the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys, which we funded and now has received state grant money. I think you're going to end up seeing Royal King and that group really making an impact on some of the violent crime issues that we've had. Obviously, it's an important, important issue for local government. You can't have economic development and affordable housing and discussions about other issues if you're trying to deal with violent crime. Now, I think that if we're being fair, if you look at the post-COVID era in metropolitan areas around the country, you've seen increases in crime, specifically in violent crime. I think it's important to note that it is not just a law enforcement problem. It is not just, hey, the police have to solve the problem, or the sheriff's office has to solve the problem. It is a community-wide problem, and it's something that we all have to invest in, we all have to acknowledge and be honest about it, which again, I think the sheriff's report really laid bare. So I think we're moving in the right direction, obviously. Until we get to a point where we have no shootings, we're not going to be happy with the status of, of our situation. So we have to provide opportunity, whether that be economically or educationally, and, and do our best to try and move the needle, and actually put into place policies and positions and efforts that, that really solve the problem, or work to solve the problem. We can't just talk about it all the time.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you. If you, if you were here for the city commission discussion, you heard them say that public safety is their number-one strategic priority. It's very important for us, too. And in 2020, we had 28 murders in Leon County, that's a record. We've never had that many murders in one year. We've have, have improvements since then, fortunately, but the problem is still there. I, I think the sheriff is doing some really good work with the All-In Initiative. For those that may not have heard it, it's basically every, every community resource, every neighborhood, every citizen in the county, all working together. It's not just reliant on sheriff and the police department, it's all of us working together to reduce crime, and that's really what it's going to take. The sheriff also asked us, the county commission, for help in establishing the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys. This commission unanimously supported that, as did other organizations in Leon County, to get that commission started. That is, that's a springboard off of the Anatomy of Homicide report that his office put together, which is taking a look at the, which is targeting specific at-risk men and, and boys in Leon County, helping them, providing support to them before they enter the criminal system. And that's really key. One of the things that, it's going to make it harder for us, is to be frank, and I don't mean to get political, but the permitless carry legislation that just became law. That now allows, it's, it's a law in Florida, you can conceal a weapon without having a background check, without having a permit, in the state of Florida. And frankly, that's going to make it harder for us and every other community in this state to crack down on shootings and murders. So it's a law now, the legislature's not even out, but it's, it's a law, and what we will need to do as a, as a state is try to figure out how to correct that, because that is not going to help us when it comes to crime in Leon County or elsewhere. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox.
So in an effort not to repeat, because I think Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Welch covered it all, I would just say that we, we are working, the sheriff and the police department are working on, on the crime problem that we have here, and I have complete confidence in the job that they're going to do. I think we have done things to move the ball forward that Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Welch have already talked about, but as Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner, both of them said, this is a community problem that, that we all have to get involved in, and if the community's not going to get involved, doesn't matter how much the sheriff or the police department does, we won't go anywhere. And the first part of that is, and I think the biggest part of that is, is how we go about dealing with one another. If you think about just in general, how much, let's say, I will go back to even when I was a young child in the 80s, how, how much we were able to help our neighbors because we operated from a place of love. I remember there was a young man, there was an older man who was a, who was homeless, and, and he used to come, he used to, his name was Buster, and Buster was all over the place all the time, and, but everybody in our family always supported Buster. We always wanted to make, make sure Buster ate, we always wanted to make sure that Buster had his meds, we always wanted to make sure that Buster was okay and safe. These days, today, we don't operate in that same kind of love. And when we don't operate in that same kind of love, what you get is a, is a society that could care less about what's happening with your neighbor and only care about what's happening in your house. Law enforcement can only do so much. Until we change that thought process to get back to where we were as Americans, where we cared about the whole neighborhood, not just our neighborhood, the whole community, not just our community, we're going to continue to see what we're seeing. And so when we talk about, when we talk about it being a community problem, what I mean by that, in particular, is the mindset in which we operate, the mindsets we, in which we live as Americans, to care about our whole neighborhood, not just our whole community, not just that little piece of the community that's our neighborhood.
Okay. Final thoughts from you, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. The, you know, you asked, are we going in the right direction? And it's hard to say yes, because there's still so much violent crime impacting people. And yet I would still say we're starting in the right direction. The programs developed that the other commissioners have mentioned are new, innovative ways to address the old longstanding problem, and we're investing in them, and the community, we talk about community, it's absolutely not just law enforcement's responsibility, and the community is part of, is part of the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, and we're bringing in outside experts. We don't need to keep doing the same thing. I'm very hopeful for the city's group violence intervention program that's been successful in many other cities. And so I think that as long as we continue to invest in these new programs and not, you know, drag them back and forth with each news cycle, then we're going to see results. And then as far as the community, it's, it's where we step in, not just our attitude, which it is, but it's, as a local government, have we invested enough in the community need? So many community needs that are lacking lead to crime, economic insecurity, lack of quality infrastructure, like lit sidewalks, safe pathways, and community centers for kids to go to. And so that's where we need to invest in the community, and that will help address the problem that gets us there. And finally, this must be the Sheriff Walt McNeil Fan Club, which is well-deserved on his part. We were at a Capitol area Justice Ministry Miimi action last week, and one thing I think that brings us forward is, he said he committed to moving up to about 70% of minors who get, who would get arrested, get pre-arrest diversion. His target now will be 100% of minors they interact with, the sheriff's office, that are eligible, do not get arrested, and get sent to pre-arrest diversion so they can have a chance and not shuffled into the criminal justice system.
Well, one factor that could be a mitigator when it comes to crime, there's certainly jobs, and here in the Capitol region, we're looking at essentially full employment. Anything below 3% jobless rate is considered full employment, and Florida is a hole for February, it was 2.7%, and yet we still have people here coming off of the COVID situation that are still hard-pressed to find and hire and retain employees. Now with the new center out at the east end of town, Commissioner, we have...
Commissioner Welch actually corrected me, that is right over the boundary, District 4, but we'll work very well together on it.
Okay, very good. We have two commissioners instead of one who'll be working on the Amazon situation, but that's going to be 1,000 jobs there that are going to need to be filled. So what can the Leon County Board of County Commissioners do to try to jumpstart some additional employment to help such things as homelessness and all of that situation? Start with you, Commissioner O'Keefe, and then head back.
This is a great question, and you know, when we talk about the workforce, we talk about people having a hard time finding jobs. One thing, I'm a CPA, I'm an economics nerd, and one thing what we're seeing is, if there's a lack of supply, the demand goes up and the price goes up. When there's a lack of supply of workers, the demand goes up, wages and benefits should go up, and that's what we are seeing now. It's been rare, people haven't seen it in decades, but it's, it's a possibility. Now, what do we do as a county commission? I think there's two areas I think we, I would like to see us focus more on, that would make us, give us a competitive advantage in our regional workforce over everyone else, and that is finding a way to provide affordable access to childcare so parents can re-enter the workforce. And two, building on what is, we're seriously lacking up, a pipeline for people who want to enter trades fields in building and construction and other trades fields that are on an apprentice or training basis, not education basis, for many reasons that I could take the entire time on. That puts our workforce ahead of so many in the regions who track business, and that puts people in good-paying career jobs, they don't have to take on student loan debt for it, or not work while they go to school, and it, I'm going to stop because I don't, I only have two minutes. Those are two things I think we could do that we could be leaders in the field of workforce development.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Maddox.
Along with everything Commissioner O'Keefe said, I just think it comes down to continuing to create an environment where business can thrive, not one where business is the only thing that thrives, because we also have to have a respect for our environment as well. And so balancing that and just creating an environment where Amazon will want to come to Tallahassee, where Danfoss Turbocore continues to build on to their facility to employ more people in Tallahassee, where, you know, even I was, I was meeting with the Ambassador of Kazakhstan today, and we was talking about Phillips is looking to come use our magnetic lab to develop a, develop MRI machines at a lesser cost so developing countries can use MRI machines. Also looking at, you know, just how we continue to work with our chambers to make sure that our companies are looking for those apprentice programs, because quite frankly, Career Source is paying companies to, to let young people come in and learn trades and be apprentices. It's that partnership with those businesses to allow those folks into their, into facilities... It's that partnership with those businesses to allow those folks into their, into facilities to do such is something that we need to build on. And so we have the nuts and bolts there. We just need to continue to build them out. And as we see more and more people, because a lot of that 2% is because a lot of people got out of the workforce. As we see more and more people come back into the workforce, being able to retool them by sending them to TCC or Lively or other places to get certifications that quite frankly can put them in positions now to make hundreds of thousands of dollars as welders. And other trades that are in the market is where we need to be pushing. And even looking at our children, I've got 30 seconds, but looking at our children, as they come out as seniors, have you been to Gobby yet to see the CTE programs that they have there? They have welding, they have engineering, they have, they have aerodynamic programs there where they're learning, teaching those kids how to fly drones. By the time they get out of school, they're ready to get a job. Continuing to expand on programs like that, I think the school board is doing a phenomenal job, and I'll mention this part and I'll let it go. One person who's pushing really hard for CTE programs throughout all our schools, a school board member, Darryl Jones, and just making sure that those kids that come out are ready to jump immediately into the workforce because the money is there for them to be able to.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you. Way, many, many years ago, before I became a county commissioner, I was a computer programmer and worked in the IT sector. And so I've been interested in trying to do my part to cultivate and help IT sector here thrive. If you talk to some of the folks that are in tech here locally, they'll tell you that in the next few years, Tallahassee Leon County is poised to be a regional hub for tech when it comes to the development of applications and such. We really have an opportunity to do this. With Amazon coming with 1,000 jobs, paying $15 an hour or more, that's great, but that's, we need to look beyond that. You know, I think Commissioner O'Keefe said this, the key toward addressing poverty, food insecurity, the affordable housing shortage, really lies within one thing, which is to raise incomes. If we can raise the median income in this county, that will help us address a lot of our social ills. That's really what we need to focus on. If there's one thing we focus on, that's it. Yesterday, I went to the Sid Martin Biotech Incubator, which is a 40,000 square foot facility, an incubator in Alachua. And they have existed for 28 years. And they have been able to have a vision, and over decades, they have stuck to that vision on cultivating biotech companies, helping them grow. In fact, during the time that they've been in existence, they've created 8,000 jobs. And those companies going through the program have generated $9 billion. And if you take a look at North Florida Innovation Labs, which is being constructed right now in Innovation Park as we speak, that is the vision of success for the North Florida Innovation Park, Innovation Labs is going, is the Sid Martin Biotech Incubator. So if you get a chance, go to Alachua, take a look at that facility, because that is what the North Florida Innovation Labs should be, could be in a few decades, in 20 years or so, with sustained investment and cultivating those types of incubator businesses to create startups. That's really the key where we need to go. We need to invest in those types of jobs that help increase incomes, because that is really the key toward a more prosperous future for us.
All right, sir. And Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Tom. I think that when you look at, when you talk about job creation, I work with the future workforce every day. I had this conversation in my class just today, because we talk about the economies of developed worlds and tertiary services and providing service. We're a service-based economy, which leans heavily on skills, skill development. I think if you look at Tallahassee and Leon County, we have, we understand, we all know that the great equalizer is education, you know, the key to getting out of poverty and creating prosperity is through getting a job and getting a career and creating a nice income. And I think that we've got a lot of, from my understanding, that the chambers have told us, we have more jobs than we have people. So I think that our concern is to be on, then needs to be on developing a workforce. Well, good for us, we live in an education town. We've got, when you talk about Lively and you talk about TCC and you talk about FSU and FAM, you talk about our high school CTE and continuing our career in technical education programs that we've invested in at the, at the school district level, we have a lot of potential there. And so I think we continue to invest in that stuff. We do have an emerging tech sector. When you talk about companies like Ruvo's, our investment at Blueprint with our economic development dollars in the North Florida Innovation Labs, like Commissioner Minor talked about, we're doing the right things, but we've got to understand that Tallahassee is a place people want to be. We see the private sector growing here. We see the public sector investment trying to keep up with the private sector investment. And so what we need to do then is encourage and create a quality of life that keeps our students here, that encourages our high school students. Again, I had this conversation just today, you know, if you really want to create a life and a career for yourself as a 15, 16, 17-year-old, you start to think about carpentry, you start to think about plumbing, skilled trade jobs are really the future of our economy. And there was, Jay Revel said something the other day on social media about how he had to go take his shoes in to get them repaired, and the cobbler told him it was a 30-minute fix, but it was going to be six weeks to get the job done because he had such a backlog. I think that's a great example of the problems that we have, and we've got to find a way to alleviate those. We have the great blessing of our economic development dollars at Blueprint, which we can use targeted in a way that really helps get people trained, foster apprenticeships, and really grow that workforce, which I think is really our problem.
And there's some work we want to put the audience to. If you have any questions for the members of the county commission who are here with us tonight, make sure that you have that marked down on a piece of paper and raise it just like that. And a friendly member of the Village Square staff will come and pick it up, and we'll put that into the discussion here in just under 10 minutes. We need to talk about, of course, what's going on right across the street from the Leon County courthouse in the state Capitol. A lot of things going on that are impacting now local governments. Preemption is a word that maybe 10 years ago, we had no idea what it meant, and now we do. And I wanted to ask each of the members of the county commission here to talk about what's going on at the Capitol, how you see that playing out insofar as what your responsibilities are within your own situation and how you might be able to do something about that. So Commissioner Welch, let's talk to you first on that.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. You know, the legislature across the street is an interesting entity. I think that, probably a gentle way of putting it, I think as local elected officials, obviously we have to deal with a lot of what comes out of the building across the street. I think there's a couple of ways you can approach that as an elected official at the local level. You can, you can stomp your feet and make a big fuss about it, or you can try to find ways to actually make what comes out of the building a little more palatable, right? So we have a local legislative delegation, we have a lobbyist that we hire at the county, we have relationships across the way there. I think that through robust communication, you try to relay the impacts of potential bills that are coming out of the legislature on the, on local government. Commissioner O'Keefe was just in the Capitol last week testifying about a bill that's going to create some issues in terms of local development, I believe it's a development bill, Commissioner, that you were testifying on, it's going to make it a little more, or was it the real estate? I'm sorry, the affordable housing bill, I'm sorry.
Which preemption was it? There's a lot to choose from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was tenant renter protection.
Rental protection, yeah. So obviously, the state legislature, I think we have to give them the benefit of the doubt in the same tone that we were talking about earlier. What they do at the state legislature applies to all 67 counties. So all counties have to deal with it. All counties have an interest in making sure that good legislation and good policy comes out of the building. We have a Florida Association of Counties that advocates as well. So I think our job, just like it is when we're pursuing issues on our dais, is to advocate for the interests of our constituents and the citizens we serve and make sure that the folks in the legislature know that the policies that they pass have an impact on everyday people and people's lives at the local level.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Commissioner Welch. I'm glad to know you're one of the 10 people who watched my YouTube video. Because none of the senators did. So that's exactly right. There's a ton of preemptions, and we have to do what we can to prevent them. Because we can be, and we should be polite about it, we have to follow the law. But the preemptions make it very hard for us to solve the problems we want us to solve. I was testifying against SB 1586, which would preempt any locality from doing anything related to tenant and rental relations, which is an issue that we have on the, on the agenda that we brought up, to consider a notice requirement. And so, you know, if you look at how the state legislature is preempting, they're not preempting all laws. They have a clear theology or a clear policy or agenda. They're tend to be preempting liberal, aggressive laws that help everyday people in our community, that protect our environment, that protect our people who need economic security, that protect the way we develop our communities in the way we want. And those are the things they are preempting. They're not preempting clear-cutting trees to build big commercial real estate properties. And so it's unfortunate, and we do what we can do. That's one thing I think I'd always say, is I do what I can do, so I can try and, you know, argue against the preemption, hope it doesn't get passed. And then when it does get passed, as it will, fight it in court if we can, if it's not legal, or work within it. I've worked in government a long time, and there's, you find the rules, and you find that one government worker who knows all the rules and knows how to get through what you need to get through. Unfortunately, every preemption makes that pathway narrower and narrower. And the reason they have to keep doing this is because we are the closest to you as our neighbors. We see you in the grocery store, we see you at these meetings. You don't have to be a donor or lobbyist to get a meeting with us and tell us what you want. And that's why we are always many steps ahead of the state when it comes to fixing these problems. And so hopefully that they will, you know, get out of the way soon enough and be the party of small government, and we can keep serving our community.
Commissioner Minor?
Thank you. Just to add to what's already been said, you know, I've been a county commissioner for coming up on five years, and Chairman Maddox here has been in the commission a lot longer than I have, and he's actually a former president of the Florida Association of Counties. And that association, which is essentially, it's an association of all the county commissioners in the state of Florida, has a very good lobbying. And if you're on one of the legislative committees, you have, during the session, you have a call every Friday with that lobbying team. And they, they're at the Capitol every single day during session. And they, we talk about what those issues are, what attacks on home rule there are, as well as talking about the politics. Sometimes the origin of a bill comes from the most ludicrous origin you can possibly imagine. A constitutional officer, I'm not going to say what kind, has some type of dispute with his county commission and then goes to his legislator, and before you know it, there's a statewide bill that addresses and, you know, pokes a stick at his county commission that affects all the rest of us in the state. That's real. But we're talking with the fact, the Florida Association of County staff, lobbyists, and really working hard. They're going into the offices of these legislators and trying to work with the politics to do as best we can to protect home rule. And some of these legislators are actually former county commissioners, former city commissioners. When they get into legislature, sometimes I think they forget about the value of home rule and how, as Commissioner O'Keefe said, you know, the government that's closest to the people, that meets the citizens in the supermarket after we have, after we vote on things, is, in my opinion, the government that should be closest to its own jurisdictions. And so that's a, that's a big thing. It's, Commissioner Maddox, I know can talk about this more than I can, but it seems that in the last couple of years, we've had a flurry, a surge of more preemptions of local authority. And I think it's to the detriment of the state. I think that local governments that are doing a pretty good job, that are very responsive to the citizens, that are being kept away from being as responsive as they could be.
Thank you. And with that name checked, Commissioner Maddox, you've got the last word on this one.
Thank you. It's an all-out attack on local government. And to make it, to make it as simple as possible, and I think most times, you all as constituents don't understand how important it is. Raise your hand if you would rather go to the state legislature to argue a bill or a point than come to the county commission.
For the record, not one hand went up.
Not one. That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about. It takes the power away from us to do what you've asked us to do, and it puts it in the state legislature's hands. And so someone, make it even simpler, someone in Miami is voting on whether or not you have the right to know whether your rent is going to be raised three months prior to the extent, to the end of your lease. Why is that fair to you? As Leon County citizens, you don't like things the same way they do down in Miami. And folks in Miami don't like things, things the way down there that you do here. There's a, there's a, there's a certain gravitas that we have as Leon County citizens that we like to respect and that we would like to keep things the way that they are in certain ways, but grow in the way that we want to grow, right? So let's say our trees, our canopy trees, we love our trees here. I'm telling you, I could very well see in the next five years, the legislation coming up with some kind of bill that says that we can't, we cannot in any way affect our legislate or put ordinances in place that speak on how we're going to mandate what businesses or landowners should do with their trees and should not do with their trees. I can see it. And when that happens, we have no say. I remember being on the commission, when I first got on the commission, one of the first things I learned about home rule was probably the third meeting I was a commissioner. And Rick Scott was governor, God bless his soul. And we're sitting on the commission, third meeting, and the county attorney says, we got to take these ordinances off the books. The ordinance was, you cannot shoot a gun across a county road. The ordinance was, you cannot shoot a gun or carry a gun in a county park. The ordinance were all reasonable, but the state has said there's a preemption when it comes to guns, that we can't make anything, we can't have anything on the books. And if we did not take those off the books, we would be removed as county commissioners and fined. There's not one citizen in here, whether you are pro-gun or not, that would have disagreed with any of the ordinances that we had, but we had to take them all off. And in order for anyone to fight that, you would have had to go to the legislature to fight it. Home rule is one of the most important issues that you all have as Leon County citizens because it dictates what we can do that you ask us to do. And there's a lot of times, I'm coming, I'm sitting on this one. There's a lot of times, I really want you to understand this, because nobody, not many of you, not many of you all will go across the street and talk about home rule, but you will come in our chambers and tell us what we didn't do that you're asking us to do that we can't do because the state won't let us do it. Go across the street and let these people know that you want your local elected official to be able to make decisions for your community that work for your community. Or the assault on home rule is going to continue, and we're going to have less and less power to do the things that we need to do to keep the character of Leon County what it is and what you all love it to be.
Well said.
Folks, to cover as much ground as we possibly can, and since you guys are just models of collegiality, maybe you can designate one of your number to answer each of these questions, and we'll get through them, okay? For two years, the Children's Service Council members nominated by the county commission have levied only 75% of the tax they were expected to impose and have thus given up $4 million in taxes that the vast majority of voters supported to provide better opportunities for kids through the Children's Services Council. So did you originally expect the council to impose the full half-mill tax? And as we approach the third year of the council's existence, shouldn't we be getting up to full speed on that? Who would like to handle that one?
Chairman, you going to let me quarterback this?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Minor actually really wanted to be on the Children's Services Council and yielded to Commissioner coming. So I think he would probably be best to answer that question, Commissioner Minor.
Thanks. Thank you, Chairman Maddox. Yes and no. Yes and no. I think when the Children's Services Council was on the ballot, it passed by an overwhelming 66% in this county. So this is strongly desired and needed to improve the quality of life for our kids and to help our kids live up to their full potential. I think that what the CSC needs to do is make sure that it moves forward in the right way. You know, these are taxpayer dollars, and yes, voters approve these dollars to go to the CSC, but those dollars still belong to all of you. And the CSC has to be good stewards to use those dollars effectively. Actually, I have a little story to tell you. I, when the budget proposal for the CSC first came to light, I looked at it and I thought, it seems like the personnel costs are very high for a nonprofit that does not directly provide service delivery. And so I was skeptical, but the more I looked into it, the more I talked to the executive director and, and people on the council and looked at different CSCs around the state, I realized that actually they're going about it the right way. So that the same proportion of personnel cost is also being done in Martin, Alachua, and Sarasota. So, and these are, two of those of three have been CSCs that have been existing for quite a while, and they've got proven successes to demonstrate. So I think the CSC is moving in the right direction. I think we'd all would like to have it be faster, but it's important to me, and I think it is to every other taxpayer, that it's done the right way. And so I feel that the executive director and the CSC members are moving forward in a very judicious way, making sure that the money that you and I give them is being used effectively to make sure that we do everything we can to help Leon County kids live up to their full potential.
Speaking of money, what could the county do to incentivize... Speaking of money, what could the county do to incentivize employers to pay higher wages, especially given the job situation we talked about a little bit earlier? Commissioner?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, can you restate the question? Because it's a very good question, I want to be very clear answered.
Is there anything the county can do to incentivize local employers to pay more money to their employees, given the fact that it's tough to get folks right now?
You know, I believe that the local government's sweet spot is not getting in the way of the market when the market's working. And I got to tell you, for labor, the market is starting to work. And so I'm not one to jump in and say, let's fix this, enforce employers. I think, you know, that if there's not a supply of a specific skill problem or a qualifications problem or infrastructure problem, where local government can step in and smooth things out, or connecting talent to openings like our chamber does, or Leon Works does, or things like that, those are all things we can do. But I don't think we have a role convincing employers how to run a business and understand economics, that if you can't fill the positions, then see what more value you can give people. I do have a secret plan, though, that I did not mean to put out here.
It's a secret?
The secret is, I'm a strong believer in employer-provided healthcare for, sorry, employer-provided childcare for large institutions. It's how I went to childcare at the hospital my mom worked at as a kid. She got to come and have lunch with us when it was our birthday and all this kind of stuff. But I think, we, we're not going to, you know, mandate that, but I'm going to try to convince this commission, I really didn't mean to say this out in public, that we should investigate this because we're a large enough employer that we're going to take your good employees to the county with a benefit like that. And if you want to compete for the best employees, you've got to compete with that kind of benefit. That's an example of us not getting in other people's way, but putting where we can in the market.
And you heard it here first. Okay.
We've got a quorum tonight, you know, we could, go on it now.
We need to notice requirements? Well, here's something the county may have a little bit more control over, because we heard about Algo Blooms and Lake Munson and that kind of thing. So an environmental question here. What can you do about such things as water quality in those lakes? And an additional inquiry, is the recycling program still viable?
I'll take it. I'll take it. You know, Lake Munson has been a big issue. I was going to give it to Commissioner Welch because he had a problem, and he reached out to staff and they were able to deal with that problem out in District Four. But I think what we have to do, we have done an incredible job, the county has invested a lot of money into Lake Munson. It's probably one of the biggest problems that we have as far as, well, the most, the water body has the most problems that we have in Leon County. But we have to continue, one thing we've talked, we've been talking about is testing the site and making sure that we understand what is, which bodies are natural water bodies versus which bodies are actual stormwater facility. There's a difference between the two, and a lot of people don't understand that. A lake is a lake is a lake, but that's not true. There are some lakes that are stormwater facilities that, that are specifically there for stormwater facility use and not there to be a, a lake that you fish in, pull fish out and eat. Lake Hurrieta, I believe, is one of which is that is a stormwater facility, right? Whereas Munson, Lake Munson is a natural water body that we're trying our best to restore, right? And the tennis, and the ways that you go about restoring one is not the way that you go about restoring the other. And one thing that I brought up in a couple, a few meetings ago is, you know, we're known for our trails, we're known for our environmental beauty. What if one day we could also be known for our water bodies and our lakes? How do we continue to invest in our lakes? How do we continue to invest in our water bodies to just, to be all, to be an all-around jewel of the South when it comes to the natural aesthetic of what we have here in Leon County? Think about it, our trees, our trails, our canopy roads, and now it's at our lakes. But it's going to take investment, it's going to take planning, it's going to take time. Those who might have, have thought that we haven't put those three things into Lake Munson are absolutely wrong. Go back and check the records of how many millions of dollars we've invested there and how many millions of dollars we're going to continue to invest to make that the best water body that we can or keep, get it up to par. I think we need to put that focus on all of our water bodies and continue to really, really focus on creating that quality of life, I think Commissioner Welch talked about, that makes people want to be a part and live in Leon County.
30 seconds for each one of you because we're running out of time here. Commissioner O'Keefe, one thing you'd like to do that you haven't done yet?
I want to, I'd like it to be more profound. I've got to do a lot of the more profound things, but I would like to ride along in some of the big Publix work trucks and equipment. Sorry. That's what I want to do.
Commissioner Minor.
You're catching me off the, okay, just off the top of my head, I would, we're making some progress on North Monroe. North Monroe is entirely in my district, District Three. I'd like to see some profound changes and improvements on North Monroe. We're right on the cusp right now of whether North Monroe is going to be improving in terms of its general appeal and benefit to the community, or if it's going to slide. We've got to act now because if we wait another 15 years and then try to remediate it, it's going to be too expensive and too late.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Tom. For me, I want to make sure that our quality of life amenities are improved. We've got a northeast park coming into my district, which is a huge priority of mine, along with $200 million in blueprint investment for road building and other park facilities. I would love for our county to have a world-class recreational athletic facility, perhaps fairgrounds, we've talked about, or somewhere else in our county where we can attract economic development through tournaments and things like that. I think that would be a great idea, and I would love to be involved in that in my team.
Okay, and the chair gets the last word, a very short word, sir.
Thank you. I hate it when my colleagues steal my ideas.
Did I get yours? I'm sorry.
You know, the sports facility is my thing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so listen, the sports facility thing is huge for me, man. I played sports as a young kid and I traveled to different areas as a result, that's one. When I came in, I wanted to rebuild Orange, I wanted to rebuild, I'm sorry.
We're going to have to leave it at that, Commissioner, they're cutting me off here.
Joe Louis, and that's still on the board. I still want to do that, rebuild the project so those kids get to experience the quality of life that they have over in other parts of the community.
Thank you, sir. To all of our county commissioners for joining us for the Tallahassee Town Hall, thank you again to our studio and digital audience for the questions and for taking the time to be here. On behalf of our partners, Tallahassee Democrat, WFSU Public Media, Leadership Tallahassee, and the Village Square Night.